What you're going to do is I'm going to put my hand up under here. You're going to tighten and gently squeeze your stomach and tighten your buttocks and push your stomach down so that you feel the pressure on my hand. Do you feel that? Now, this should be a firm feel back here, okay?
Let me just make a point here. When you get that firm feel, you should feel that firm friendly hand of mine, I hope it's firm and friendly, and that's the way your mattress should feel, and when you're sitting down, that's the way you should feel in your back against the chair. This is key to back comfort and back support and back stabilization.
Okay. All right, so now, we're going to have you do it, okay? Once you put your legs down. All right. Now, one leg at a time, you're going to bend your knee, put your foot flat on the bed. Other knee, flat on the bed. Your stomach, everything, you're flat.
Just a point about that, one knee at a time. It's much easier on your back to deal with one leg coming up at a time than when you try to bend two. And when you're having severe pain, any pain you can avoid is a plus.
Right, it's really to prevent straining, so, okay. My hand is under here. Now, you're going to tighten your stomach and squeeze your buttocks, and that's a good feel. I can feel some pressure back there, that's perfect, okay? Now, that's the pelvic pinch. In summary, to do a pelvic pinch, you should first lie on your back with your knees up and your feet flat, then push your stomach in and squeeze your buttocks together. It's a very subtle movement.
Now, we're going to incorporate the pelvic pinch into life skills. Here in the bedroom, I'd like you to meet Kathy Warner, our occupational therapist. She's going to first demonstrate how to get in and out of bed with as little pain as possible. Kathy?
Thank you, Dr. Sweetsie. And here we have Janet with us today to help us demonstrate these. What we're going to be teaching you is how to get in and out of bed and how to do a log roll. All of these will help you do it with as little pain as possible. We're going to incorporate the pelvic pinch into these movements. Okay, Janet, first what I want you to do is do your pelvic pinch, okay? And as you sit down, reach for the bed also with your hands so that you're supporting yourself and stabilizing yourself.
Okay.
There you go. Once you're at that point, hold your pelvic pinch and scoot back, okay? You can see how Janet did that, she's scooting back on the bed. Great. As Janet's going to be lying down, what we're going to want to incorporate again is the pelvic pinch. She's going to be reaching for the side of the bed and incorporating that stabilization for us. Okay, Janet, reach for the side of the bed with your hands, bring your legs up, there you go, get your head down on the pillow. Good. All right. Again, maintain that pelvic pinch, and we're going to roll using these three points as a reference point. She's going to move her knees, her hips, and her shoulders together. Okay, Janet? Great. All right. And she's stabilizing and hopefully doing that in a comfortable way. Now, when we're going to get out of bed, again, we're going to be doing our pelvic pinch, holding that, we're going to move in our log roll fashion. Okay, here we go. Pelvic pinch, log roll to your side. Good, good. Okay, when we're going to get up, this is important that you use your hands here to push off with, and you swing your legs down at the same time. Maintain your pelvic pinch, and here we go. Up. Good. All right. As you can see, she's moving through these units, and she's holding that pelvic pinch and using the log roll. And as we're going to get out, we're going to scoot forward again. There you go. Nice wide base of support. There you go. Okay, stand up. Thank you. In summary, what we're trying to do today is show you in the bedroom, the incorporation of the pelvic pinch with your life skill of getting in and out of the bed and using the log roll.
Wow, that was great. These are learnable skills, aren't they?
These are applicable exercises that people can take home with them and use in their everyday life to feel better when they have arthritic pain.
Well, of course, I was chuckling to myself, I must admit, because I'm thinking, okay, getting into bed, I got to move a 12-pound dog and a 30-pound dog.
So it becomes a challenge, you see, and you have to learn how to do it appropriately in your setting.
Mm-hmm. Now, what about the role of exercise? I know I'm forever telling people, you've got to be more active, you know, don't become a vegetable, but good exercise can help with all of these symptoms of rheumatological disorders.
Well, there's aerobic exercise. That allows you to increase your heart rate and allows you to function better overall, which should be done a few times a week. And there are also other things like strengthening exercises and the resistance exercises, which can be done. And they can be maintained on an everyday basis to maintain what you have, your range of motion of different joints and muscles, and to strengthen what's already there. A lot of times, this can be done at home.
Right, and some simple exercises too. Sitting in a chair or being able to maybe do a squat to keep your quads tight.
Sitting in a chair and just elevating your legs up and holding it strengthens the quadriceps here, and it allows the kneecap or the patella bone to become stronger when you have a knee issue.
Right, see, these are all handy tips. Now, it's time for another break, and when we come back, we'll continue our discussion on rheumatology and the Sweetsie Institute. We'll be right back.
I have cash for seven to nine days. I also have a copy of my passport, birth certificate, and insurance papers.
Hi, it's me. I have water and food.
Don't forget, we'll need a first aid kit and my prescription medicine.
Got your message. I have clothes and a flashlight pack. I'll bring batteries and some tools, too.
Where's the radio?
A disaster can happen anytime. Are you prepared? At your next family gathering, build your emergency kit, find the 10 essential items and more at L A D T dot org. Just be ready. Prepare together.
Before approaching an intersection, so that's why two wrong turns don't make a right turn. Now let's learn about tailgating.
Hey, that's how I got my ticket.
You got a ticket for tailgating? That's not good. That can be really annoying.
Doesn't get you there any faster.
It leaves you no distance to break.
Which makes it easier to get into a crash.
And it also may increase your insurance premium.
And I hate you, tailgater.
Tailgating causes crashes. Back off. Watch the road.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today is prevention of musculoskeletal problems. Our guest is from the Sweetsie Institute, Dr. Elise Rubenstein. Doctor, the prevention is such an important element in this, and you already showed, even sitting in a chair, how lifting your leg can help with the quadriceps and alignment. Are there other sort of simple, at-home exercises that a person can do?
Absolutely. And what I did is I brought with me one of these exercise balls that we have at the Sweetsie Institute.
Yes, I noticed that big white thing right there.
You could see it sitting right here.
Now, what is this called?
So this is called an osteo ball.
Osteo ball, okay.
And it's amazing tool that we have, and it's a way to strengthen muscles and in fact, increase bone mass. It has shown with some of the studies that we have. And what this is, is this ball that's inflated two-thirds of the way.
Two-thirds of the way, right.
It's used for isometric or resistance exercises. So you have two little handles here, and you pull outward on it, and then you hold at that place.
I see.
And it can be done with a lot of different exercises.
Is it, oh, it's not heavy at all?
It's very light, anybody, even a 90-year-old considering. It's still there.
Well, exactly. And there are a whole lot of exercises listed here and numbered. Now, I believe we have some footage of this actually being utilized so people can have an idea of how handy this could be. Is this something that can be prescribed at the institute?
Absolutely, we do that a lot for people that want this type of exercise. It works very well.
Well, let's take a look at an exercise using the osteo ball that is a good upper-back strengthener. The trainer is Kathy Stevens.
You'll be positioning the ball behind you against the wall. You'll have the ball level with your hips and your palms flat against the ball. You're going to be exercising the muscles of the upper back, backside of the shoulders, and in general, all those postural muscles between the shoulder blades. So what you're going to want to do is step about two to four inches away from the ball so that your hips aren't touching the ball. And then, you're going to create the contraction by pressing firmly into the ball, palms to ball, pushing that ball against the ball. You want to progressively increase that tension, contracting between the shoulder blades, the backside of the shoulders, even a little bit down the triceps, as you take the deep breath and count out, push one through push five. It's going to be important as you do this exercise that you keep your head and neck in alignment. A tendency might be to jet forward with the chin as you're pressing. So be aware of good standing alignment, and then start that second repetition, pushing the palms, contracting back, opening up the shoulders and chest, squeezing and contracting, and counting down, push one through push five. And then you can relax against the ball.
Wow, that was very interesting, and it appeared to be quite simple, and those exercises are all illustrated on this ball.
It's for easy use, it comes with a manual, and then people can just do it right from looking at the ball themselves once they get used to it.
Right, exactly. Well, I'm going to ask the ball to take a powder. We have heard so often that people are afraid of being evaluated for fear of terrible news. But what is the process for a person to contact the Sweetsie Institute and come in for evaluation when they know something is wrong?
So, it depends the route that they're going. So if it's for osteoporosis, what they would do is they'd contact the institute, they would get an appointment and come in for a bone density examination or a DEXA. And it's a very simple procedure. They lay flat on what would be considered like an examination bed, and then you have a bar above you that just goes forward and back, takes about 15 minutes.
Wow, that's...
It's not invasive, very little radiation. You get more radiation when you fly from Los Angeles to San Francisco than you would get sitting on this.
Really? Oh, that's wonderful.
Thanks to know that.
That is good, because people do have concerns about that.
I ask this question a lot.
Now, you mentioned really at the beginning here, that men get more rheumatoid arthritis than women?
No, actually, women.
Women do first, okay.
Males get more than men for rheumatoid arthritis.
Doesn't that a lot have to do with hormonal changes that women go through after menopause and all?
Well, for rheumatoid arthritis, it can happen almost at any age. There is a subset of people which get it, the majority of them in their 20s and 30s and 40s, but then there's an older segment that can get it in their 50s and 60s. But things like osteoporosis is, I think, what you might have been referring to.
Right, that's the one.
Yeah, can happen more commonly to women after they go in menopause. Their estrogen levels decrease, and the first seven years after menopause, there's almost a 20% loss in bone density.
Wow.
So it's really imperative at this time to go get checked with a DEXA for a bone density examination, to see where you sit at and what you need to do.
Right. I can think of so many times, Granny Grace lived with us in the house, and watching those physical changes, the shrinkage and the suddenly the back that was bowed, and watching those changes.
So it's very interesting, osteoporosis can a lot of times be a silent disease of where we don't see anything or know what's happening until a fracture or a break occurs in the spine. Other times, there can be physical manifestations of compression fractures, or what you had talked about, the hunched-over feel where you get the back that's bowed.
Right, exactly.
Where the patient becomes kyphotic, and this interferes with their daily life. If you can imagine, you're hunched over, and your diaphragm is then being pushed in a different direction. You have more problems breathing because you're in this position. You're walking with a forward gait, so you're walking different, and there's more probability of falling.
And falls are, they're just a deadly thing.
And they're already there. So osteoporosis affects a large percentage of people in more ways than they even think. If they think they don't have the disease, they might.
Are other organs involved? Is this something that sort of spreads when you say systemic? Is it something that would affect, I don't know, hearing, balance?
Well, osteoporosis affects the bones because it's for weak bones, but when a patient starts to hunch over, it can affect their breathing.
I see.
So there might be secondary consequences because of the bones becoming broken with compression fractures or a hip fracture. A patient might be bed bound, then they lose muscle mass, and other things happened.
Well, the term we used was musculoskeletal, so I'm assuming muscles are involved here as well as they attach to the joints? Are those the parts of, like the pain puzzle that we go through?
So a lot of the diseases that I take care of, rheumatology encompasses musculoskeletal diseases.
I see, okay.
So the joints is where arthritis or osteoporosis occurs. And then we get a lot of other issues with muscles themselves of where they become inflamed or muscles attached to joints by tendons, and we can get a tendonitis if you've ever heard that word.
Oh, yes, I have.
So this all encompasses the musculoskeletal system. So people can have areas of pain that are next to the joint, like a tendonitis or an inflamed muscle or a bursitis, and these can be overuse injuries or things like this.
You know, it almost sounds like we're talking about the post-football weekend injury report because people are so athletic these days, especially in their 20s, and it seems to me that they are doing, they are taking some long-term risks with their joint and bone health.
Well, you absolutely do. So one of the big risk factors for arthritis or tears in tendons or other things later in life is prior trauma or athletes that are excessive athletes, high endurance athletes.
Right, those extremist.
Boxers, when they're punching the bag, can hurt the base of their thumb. You have different athletes which can injure different areas of the body, and they're more prone to it. Kickboxers can injure their hips, if you can imagine, from kicking the bag.
What about those, like the little league elbow? You know, we have rules where the kids aren't allowed to pitch more than a few innings.
So there's tennis elbow and a golfer's elbow, and people can get this, and I have a lot of them in that after a game of golf, they'll come to me and say, "It hurts me." And so, "It was an overuse injury."
Sure.
They need to start abstaining from doing it in the way that they were doing it, or there can be things I can help with.
Asking a golfer to abstain.
A golfer who loves to golf.
Oh, exactly.
They just want to get back to their activities. They want to live their life and enjoy them, so we give them tips to get back.
So, when you feel that twinge, now you'll have a number to call, it's up there on your screen, to get ahold of the Sweetsie Institute. Now, our time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A. Thanks so much to our guest today, Dr. Elise Rubenstein of the Sweetsie Institute. And now, it's time for our feature on aging in L.A., Senior Stat Shots, where we look at statistics and information that pertain to senior citizens. And once again, we found today's statistics in the recently released L.A. County Seniors' Count, a survey of the older adult population in Los Angeles City and County. That's about 1,300,000 people. So let's take a look at activities that seniors in the Los Angeles area are most interested in taking part in, in terms of activities. Forty-seven percent of our senior citizens would like to be interested in recreational pursuits, 36% in educational activities, 10% would like to be involved in job training and placement, 54%, more than half, want physical exercise, 24% are interested in community involvement and volunteering, 42% like to be entertained at concerts, plays, and sports events, and 25% of seniors enjoy taking part in religious activities. Only 13% had no response to this particular question. And that's today's Senior Stat Shots. Now, you can get a copy of this report simply by going online to W W W L A C C D dot org, and that means the Los Angeles County Community and Senior Services. Then click on L.A. County Seniors' Count, and the full report will then appear. Or you can have a copy sent to you by mail by calling 213-738-2065. That's 213-738-2065. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed of the many issues that face them in everyday life, and also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and ideas for future programs. So please give us a call. The number's right there on your screen, 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas, and we look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks for watching.
You know, honey, I've been thinking. You're not prepared for an earthquake. Take this antique vase your mom got you. If the big one hit, it'll be a goner. Or this clay penguin you made in third grade. History. By simply strapping loose furniture to the wall and putting putty under loose items, you can prevent serious injury and damage. Nothing is safe, even poor Uncle Petey. Get the message? Be prepared.
G'day, Troy McAlvin from North Hollywood.
22nd, 2011. I'd like to welcome all those members of the public who are here with us in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Also want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35 who tune in through our city's cable system and also rebroadcast in the evening times. We're available in a host of different ways, live and in person here, also live and in person in our two other remote council facilities in San Pedro and Van Nuys, if that's closer to where you live, also through the internet at L A city dot O R G, where we have all of our agendas available and our council support materials that are available for the public, as well as our calendar of council and committee meetings, again, on Channel 35, and then finally through your telephone by calling 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. You can listen in through your telephone to any of our council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. I want to thank those council members who are here on time pursuant to council rules, Council Members Corretts, Reyes, Smith, and Zine. With myself, that makes five members, but we do need 10 or two-thirds of our 15-member body to constitute a quorum and to begin our council meeting. Council Member Weezer and Council Member Parks are excused today. That leaves Council Members Alarcon, Cardness, Han, Krikorian, Labange, who is, I believe, up in committee and coming down shortly, Council Member Perry, Council Member Rosendahl, and Council Member Wesson. We are waiting you, you're now late, it is 10:05. So please make your way to council chambers right away so we can begin our meeting and be as courteous to the public as possible. In the meantime, we do have our agendas available for the public in the back. Those are also posted online 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special items. If you wish to be heard on any items, there is always a public hearing for all items, either in committee or the full council. If they've already had a hearing in committee, it requires a council member to reopen the hearing here in the full council. For any items that have not yet had a public hearing in committee or who have not been heard in committee at all, a card from the public will automatically trigger a public hearing here in our full council meeting. We also have a section of our council meeting for general public comment, that's for items not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under our jurisdiction and under the State Brown Act, we are happy to hear all of those items. So just fill out a speaker card here or in our remote facilities in Van Nuys and San Pedro, and we will hear you. There is a code of conduct and a two-minute time limit with a clock to help you guide your comments and to make sure that we can hear as much as possible if you can please direct those comments to the council as a whole. Thank you to Mr. Rosendahl, who's now with us, and Mr. Smith. That brings us up to seven members. Still awaiting council members Alarcon, Cardness, Han, Krikorian, Labange, and Wesson. Thank you, Ms. Han. We have now eight members waiting still, Council Members Alarcon, Cardness, Krikorian, Labange, and Wesson. Mr. Labange, thank you very much. Good to have you here. That is nine members, and we are waiting one more to constitute a quorum. It is now 10:12. This is our last quorum call. Council Members Alarcon and Cardness, Krikorian, and Wesson, you can decide to sit down to inquire their whereabouts, and hopefully we've got one of them to begin the meeting shortly. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. We do have ten members. If we can please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weeza, Corretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present, and a quorum is present.
First order of business, please.
Approval in a minute.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Good to have you back, Mr. Rosendahl. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Ms. Perry seconds. Without objection, those will be approved, as well. And for our Pledge of Allegiance, which we do every Tuesday, if I can ask everybody to rise, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Tom Labange, for our special guest, who will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you very much. It's a very special honor to have a great American here, whose son is a great city employee. You all know Luke Zamperini, but his dad, Louis Zamperini, a member of the 1936 Olympic team that represented the United States in Berlin, traveled by boat across the Great Atlantic to run. And what did you finish, Louis?
I gained fourteen pounds on the boat going over, so I didn't win anything.
He gained fourteen pounds on the boat going over, didn't gain anything. He got beat by a bunch of fins, but he's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance right now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A USC. And also, just as, got that, Mr. President, I just admit it, because there's greatness often in this room, but there's special greatness. Louis, after the Olympic Games, came back and served this country. He was shot down. In sixty-seven days, he survived in the Pacific Ocean, and then was a prisoner of war, but later returned. He lives in our district, up in the Hollywood Hills, and his son is really why I want him to come down. Luke, get next to him. The greatness is when there's a father and son, and this father has a great son who helps us all the time, and this was a great moment. But this is a real American hero, a great Trojan, and a great man. Big hand for Louis, please.
Louis, definitely. Good job. Good hand. We're going to go in the back. We're going to walk it back. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service, and thank you, Mr. Labange, for bringing him in for the pledge. If we can, please run through the agenda for today. First items.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing, and there is a card on that.
Okay, we will call that special for the card. Next items, please.
Items two through twenty, are items for which public hearings have been held. Item two is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold two on the desk. I'd like to amend eleven to, for Mr. Parks, to approve the ordinance with one amendment, the phrase, to add the phrase "missing persons" to the $10,000 category for reward motions.
President, I do believe on item eleven, that is the request for the city attorney to prepare that ordinance.
Great. If we can ask the city attorney to include that language, "missing persons," in the $10,000 category. Let's hold the ordinances on the desk until we have three more members. Just, we still are waiting Councilmembers Alarcon, Cardenas, and Krikorian. So let's hold three, four, and five on the desk. Next items?
Mr. President, a vote is required for the remaining items.
Okay, anybody wishing to call six through twenty special? Six through twenty? Nobody wishes to call six through twenty special? Oh, yeah, Mr. Corretts?
If I could call item four special for Ms. Han?
Okay. We have that special waiting, twelve members as well. Any other specials? If not, let's go ahead, and on the balance, please prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items twenty-one through twenty-seven, are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there is a request to continue item twenty-four for one week to March first.
So any objection to considering these items? Seeing none, those are before us. Twenty-four, to continue to the first of March. Any objection? If not, we'll continue that. We'll hold the ordinances, and hold twenty-two for Mr. Zine. Do we have cards on any of these items, too?
There is a card on item twenty-five.
Okay, we'll close the other public hearings. Anybody wishing to call twenty-three, twenty-six, or twenty-seven special? If not, let's go ahead.
And, Mr. President, on item twenty-three A, I believe, is a request by Councilmember Reyes to continue that to March first, one week.
Okay, we'll take the A out of twenty-three, and continue that to that date without objection. Let's go ahead with that change, and take up those three items. Please prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item?
On the supplemental agenda, item twenty-eight is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District Seven. The recommendation is to deny the application. There's been a request to hold that on the desk for Councilmember Alarcon.
Okay, do we have any cards on that?
There are no cards at this time.
We'll close the public hearing on that. We'll hold that special for Mr. Alarcon. Next item?
Items twenty-nine and thirty, are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, if there's no objection, those are now before us for consideration. Do we have any cards on these?
There is a card on item thirty.
Thirty, okay. We will close the public hearing on twenty-nine, then. Anybody wishing to call twenty-nine special? If not, let's prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
As approved. We can take up items three, five, and twenty-one now. We have twelve members for the ordinances.
Actually, twenty-one, there is a card on that item.
Okay, so three and five, please. Please prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved, and we can then go back to the commissioner, and then we'll take public comment, the commissioner nominee.
Mr. President, the committee met this morning, and the report has yet to been circulated.
Okay, why don't we hold on that, then, and we'll go straight to public comment. We'll wait till the committee report gets here, and then we will take that up. We'll start with general public comment, and Mr. Mamar Sample Suffination. He's our first speaker. Is there Mr. Mamar? Excuse me if I'm mispronouncing it, but is there? Mr. Buffination? Suffination? Going once? Going twice? All right, we'll go out to Van Nuys. Candido Maris is our first speaker there. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, and council members. Today is the hundredth anniversary of Van Nuys, and we have some balloons back there. I was hoping we'd put them on the counter, but the Sergeant-at-Arms down there said we could not do that, Mr. President. But often, I've said that I belong to the greatest city in the greatest country in the world, and Van Nuys is part of that, and we just want to wish everybody in Van Nuys a happy anniversary, and it's the people of this great area that make the city a better place. I arrived here in 1973 with fifty dollars in my pocket. I was homeless for almost three weeks, and it was the people of this great community that helped me get on my feet. So the one thing about Van Nuys is they never give up on anybody, and they always give people a chance. So I know that we're going to have a celebration this coming Saturday, but we'd like to also prepare for another one, possibly in April or May. We'd like to have something in the Irwin corridor. We'd like everybody to be invited. We'd like to have games, and music, and dance, and free food, and we hope, Mr. President, that you'll be able to attend it. We are hoping to work with the council office, et cetera, to make sure that this event takes place. But again, it's about the people. We have people that are still alive today, that were here in 1911. Mr. Frank Brash and his family were born. His brothers are, I think one of them is about 101 years old. Charlie Howell, who was also born here, went to school here, were here when this building was built, so we hope that we'll acknowledge these people, because that's the part that is bothersome sometimes, those who are doing all the hard work, and those who help build this community are forgotten, but we want to make sure that we have an event where these people are acknowledged for the great things that they do. So again, Mr. President, thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and we hope that we have a great celebration on Saturday, and that we'll see you there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, and a very happy birthday, Van Nuys, and where my grandparents lived for two decades. Love Van Nuys. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker, in council chambers. After that, we'll try one more time for Mr. Mamar Sample Sufflication.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Seems that because of the political races that are going on in the city council, there's a lot of discussion going on amongst the candidates, and one of the candidates, and some discussion from other members of the city council, other than the candidate. Jan Perry made the news in her discussion regarding her push for the oil extraction tax. She's concerned, stated in today's LA Times, or yesterday's LA Times, that you should pay attention to the unincorporated over by the Slauson and La Cienega Avenue, the area that was granted by the County Board of Supervisors to PXP. And that surprised me, because I didn't know the city got oil extraction taxes from the unincorporated areas. So maybe, honest, Jan Perry can strain that out. Here's an item, though, that really got me. According to the Related Brothers, this is in the downtown news from February 14th, that last year, and this is discussing the Grand Avenue Project, last year, the authority, which is Grand Avenue Project Authority, approved related swapping of land originally tabbed for retail development for Eli Broad's 100 million Contemporary Art Museum. Yet when you had that item on your agenda here for the $50,000 parking garage, it was part of the Grand Avenue Project. So was it swapped, or was it part, or $50,000 Grand Avenue Project? Councilman Parks made the news in his debate regarding services to his area, but regarding buckled sidewalks and overgrown trees have been curtailed because of the city's ongoing budget crisis. Yet CRA is funding those repairs, even funding downtown repairs for the new parking garage for Eli Broad's museum.
Thank you, sir. Is Mr. Sufflication here? Is there somebody, Mr. Sufflication? If not, okay, Lawrence Dickerson. After that is Arminak Noid.
I'm here in behalf of the Watts community. There was a project that was involved with a community vote during the time that I believe our council representative in Watts was first elected. It was the TNI, Targeted Neighborhood Initiative. A project was voted on during that process. It was then called the Rainbow Bridge. It began with myself, my children, a grandchild or two of Ms. Willam Moore, and what we created was known as the Rainbow Bridge. I don't know if you can see it here. So long and short of it, they're saying they're going to build a movie theater, and they're going to have to knock out half of a park that is now being maintained by CRA funds in order to create parking spaces. Now, they're talking about creating parking spaces within 200 yards of a metro rail stop called the 103rd Street Blue Line Stop. At that particular stop, in order to encourage people to ride the metro in order to go to this movie theater, we might go ahead and preserve this park that already exists. I mean, we're building a little park over here in the back alley where the homeless people stay over under the 105 freeway, and we're going to tear the end off of an existing park where this happens to be? Now, this project was the Targeted Neighborhood Initiative. There were $207,000. The community voted to put this up.
If you could just put that down, so we can make real block people's views.
The community voted to put this up, and then the money was given to the Watts Towers. Whatever they did with it, God only knows. But that process that the community voted on and decided to do this, it never happened. Now you're talking about cutting off the end of the park, so you can put in car spaces for people that you want to take the metro rail anyway? So don't put any parking spaces at all. It's limited parking. They can park over there in the shopping center, and maybe buy a few items from a merchant or two, and we can keep this?
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Arminak Noid. After that is James Cordaro in Van Nuys. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Respectable city council members, due fellow Angelinos. My name is Arminak Noid Genyon. I'm a liberal writing candidate for City Council District Eight. It is South Central. I promise African-American and Latin voters of South Central to enforce affirmative election policy and hire a lot of security guards, police officers, and janitors from a race of colored people, if you make me a council member. I stand for racial integration and social justice, environmental protection. I will cut your homelessness taxes 40% if you are poor, middle-class Angelin, to help you fix deprimanded houses and health problems. I will mandate issuance of marriage certificates to homosexuals and lesbians in order to uphold their civil rights to state of civil union equal to heterosexuals. I will cancel a human policy of euthanizing pet animals in the city shelter after four days of keeping them in cages. City shelter must feed animals and look for adoption opportunities instead. I will close down all so-called medical marijuana dispensaries in Los Angeles, as marijuana is a harmful narcotic. Those medical marijuana maps are ripoff Angelin's charging $200 per ounce of this harmful narcotic. Legitimate businesses lose their profits to marijuana maps, and Los Angeles is losing its taxes as well. I will negotiate sales of marijuana derivatives such legitimate medications such as Dronabinol and Marinadol in large pharmacies for a cheap price sticker. I will raise oil produce taxes $4 more for each barrel of oil produced in Los Angeles. City needs to eliminate its budget deficit of $400 million, according to Los Angeles Sentinel report online. Don't warn for reaction incumbent Bernard Park, who only cares to rip you off with outrageous wages of royal kind. I will cut down city executive wages 50% in half to be fiscally responsible.
Thank you, Mr. Noid. James Cordaro in Van Nuys is next, and we'll come back for Walter Bechtel, here in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Cordaro.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, City Council. I want to be like Mr. Mares, one of the first residents of Van Nuys, to wish Van Nuys a happy birthday today. It's 100 years old. I mean, I was expecting a huge celebration up here at City Hall. I'm kind of disappointed that the current council member didn't have something in place where we could all have a grand celebration honoring Van Nuys's 100th birthday. But nonetheless, we do have an event coming up on Saturday at 1:00 over near the Orange Line in Van Nuys Boulevard. I hope that we can continue with events year-round. I know that I tried to pull some permits, so we could have a grand event this weekend in the Quad, but somehow, I was turned down for those permits. Nonetheless, again, this year presents a year of celebration for Van Nuys. I'd like to create an Old Town Van Nuys, just like they have in Pasadena, where we can bring back the nostalgic history of Van Nuys, and have that continue. We are the heart of the valley. We have an outstanding civic center. I think that the best thing that we can do is promote the San Fernando Valley. We have a lot of natural resources here with history and people. So with that, again, happy birthday, Van Nuys. I wish I could have had the balloons up on the podium. Unfortunately, there was a call from downtown that the Sergeant-at-Arms would not allow that to take place, but nonetheless, they are behind me, right here, and we're here to celebrate. Thank you very much, City Council. Happy birthday, Van Nuys. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. After that will be Rick Nightingale, back in Van Nuys.
Okay, good morning. Yesterday was President's Day, but today was the day that we used to celebrate Washington's birthday, and I would like to say that John F. Kennedy, once long ago, he said, "Ask not what your country could do for you, but what you can do for a country." And for most of my life, yes, I had been involved with that, behind the scenes, trying to help a lot of people in entertainment. I have a four-year college degree at the University of California, San Diego, the sixth-most prestigious college in this United States, and I would like to say that it is true that you should not ask what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. But on that occasion, when an individual needs assistance from his country, those people who represent him shouldn't remember the words of John F. Kennedy, who said, "Do not ask what your country can do for you." Because John F. Kennedy himself would have said, "If on that occasion, however, an individual needs the assistance of his country, his country should not close their ears or their mind to what he has to say." And I have continually asked this council, and this city, and my country, to assist me in the entertainment industry, and the theft of my intellectual property, and I have names of individuals, and it's apparent to me that they keep thinking that I'm just one of those people that John F. Kennedy was talking about, somebody who's asking something from his country. Kennedy was talking about, somebody who's asking something from his country. And I tell you right now, Kennedy would have said himself, and I'm saying this again, on that occasion, when an individual needs his country's help, his country needs to come to his assistance. I'm asking you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Bectell. Rick Nightingale is our final speaker in Van Nuys.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. Good morning. I'll tell, I'll tell you, we could get a change if you go for Jamie Cardova. I mean, it's, it just needs every one of them, I hate to say it, I, the council people, I'd party with you. I would turn around and enjoy myself with you. You're all polite, but your politics sucks. That's the whole situation. It sounds really negative, but that's the situation. Look at Wisconsin. It's going to happen in California what's happened in Wisconsin. You wait and see. That, you wait and see, it's going to happen. Like in the paper, okay, like Cordova, he turned around and goes by steak dinners for all the high monkey mucks to get rid of his money, that, and that stuff. He don't have to advertise. He's been in there, he figured he has it shooed, so he's probably wine and dining the Union still again. But then there's something else I read regarding, everybody's down on the police department for these roadblocks for the sobriety tests and so forth, that you're collecting people, we'll have to say maybe illegals and so forth, that do not have driver's licenses and insurance. And they impounded their car and owe power to them because they can't afford it. Well, like I talk about my best friend, that I, well, not my best friend, acquaintance at my hot rod shop, that he's illegal. I've even tried to help him buy him a house, and he had his, his car impounded. I went down and got it for him. He turned around, he had insurance. So people say that you can't have insurance. That's a lie. You can buy it. You don't want to buy it. So I went down and I got his car for him. Granted, he didn't have a driver's license. He had to have a driver's license, and I got it for him. I mean, I will do something for this gentleman because he earns it. I've seen him earning. He isn't on the program that you people have. And then let's go to the CRA. You people have to get this thing and get these council people to vote against this CRA money. It has bankrupted the state and the city. This is where it's all at. This is why we don't. They say, "Oh, it's all for the poor, and you're going to put people out of work." Bull. You get rid of it, and it'll help the middle class and so forth. I'm telling you, that's why we need a new council people. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call for Mr. Mamar sample supplication. Nope. All right. We'll go to our public comment on individual items. Mr. Sax, if you'd like to come forward. I will take up items 1, 21, 25, and 30.
This is really basically a general public comment for items on the agenda now, right?
This is for our specific items now. So starting with the first one, Mr. Sax, if you'd like to speak on item one.
Item number one, yes, I would. Because you had this item. This is the Little Tokyo Merch, it's a merchant-based business improvement district. Doesn't really say anything in this, but it does regard, say that the assessment opposed by the Little Tokyo Business Improvement District, um, the, the Lil, L.I.L., L.I. apostrophe L, Tokyo Business Association, is the group that's running this business improvement district. It is not a property-based business improvement district like the one that's the figure-out recorder, property-based business improvement district. And I'm just wondering why that one isn't a business improvement district also, I mean, a business-based improvement district. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you stay right there? Number 21 is our next, if you'd like to speak on number 21. As a courtesy to public and, and for our business, we are taking all the public comments that were consistently given, Mr. Sax, so number 21.
Will you include that on Fridays so that we can speak on these items?
And then item number 25 will be next.
On Fridays when you do your...
So would you like to give us any comments on 21?
Yes, 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 I will. A two-year sunset provision in the baseline mansionization ordinance, that's really only as strong as, what? You decide to maintain this baseline mansionization ordinance? Just as an example, the Blue Line Construction Authority had a sunset provision in it to go to Clermont. They changed the ending point, they changed the starting point, no, excuse me, they changed the section point, they changed the commissioner, the board that sits on the Blue Line Construction Authority. And they did it, well, that was a government-imposed state, piece of state legislation. So what exactly do you incur when you put down a two-year sunset provision? It's only as strong as, what? The leaders want it to be until they decide to change something to the benefit of big business. Be very careful of the sunset provisions. It's just really a matter of who's on first, what's on second, I don't know, third base. Because, like I say, the original Blue Line Construction Authority and its sunset provision has given birth to nine different construction authorities.
Mr. President, he's still not talking about the baseline mansionization.
I'm talking about, sir, if you read the agenda, Mr. Waterboy, it's a two-year provision, two-year sunset provision.
Mr. What did you say? Mr. What?
Waterboy. Waterboy.
Sir, if you could not, you know that the policy there is to not make personal comments. We're here to hear your comments. You made that connection with the Blue Line. It's repetitive. If you do that again, if you'd like to bring it back to the mansionization, we'd like to hear those comments. Okay, go ahead, sir.
I am discussing the sunset provision clause of this item on your agenda.
Okay, you strayed from that, and it was, it was in line for the city attorney to point that out, and if you get personal about those comments, sir, we will send that violation.
Nothing personal was said. There was nothing personal said?
Okay.
What was, what was the personal item that was...
So you used a, a term, you called him Mr. Waterboy right now, and so I was just asking what you said, if you could please avoid personal comments.
But he provided that service, sir.
Thank you, sir. That'll be your last one, number 25, if you'd like to comment on that.
You, you, you used a general term of calling him an attorney, and I take exception to that.
Sir, would you like to comment on item 25? This is not a dialogue today, but we appreciate your comments if you want to stick to the business.
Item 25, yes, I would. This item, you're allocating $50,000 again in street furniture revenue fund, and again I ask, what about the CRA funds? Aren't CRA funds available? And item 27, you're using CRA funds for 700, no, actually, $1,400,000. What exactly are you going to get for $1,400,000 versus $50,000 in street revenue funds on item 25? That's 20 times the amount. Does that mean 20 streets get clarified, cleaned up? Alleyways get cleaned, stairways improvement? 20 streets for $1,500,000? But this, 27 is CRA funding, 25, street furniture revenue funding. Why not CRA funding for all the projects? What is the preliminary agreement? What is the preliminary steps to use that $930 million? You're doing street improvements for the Broad Museum? What constitutes the difference between improvements for the Broad Museum and street improvements in a district that benefit from improvements for the blighted areas? That is a, a fundamental reason that you have CRA funding around. It just doesn't really make any sense. Could you please have somebody clarify? Maybe the city attorney could clarify the rules and regulations regarding what constitutes revenue for street furniture and CRA funding projects.
Actually, I will clarify that he has not really discussed item 25 at all. Thank you. And you're out of time for item number 30, but we'll put your card in. Thank you, Mr. Sax. We do have one last card on item one. Candido Morris, if you'd like to speak on number one in Van Nuys. Hello again.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for this opportunity to speak again. Mr. President, if I may, the item that I was going to speak to was mainly that there was a brave Angelina who passed away, Daniel Perez, who was a Marine, and he was from the...
I'm sorry, sir. We already had general public comment, and my apologies if that's for a general public comment. Item one, you put a card in for, for CD9, the Little Tokyo Business Improvement District. Did you want to be heard on that one?
No, no, Mr. President, we'll, we'll pass on that one.
Okay. My apologies. Thank you. We can include that in tomorrow's meeting. We'd be happy to hear about that. Thank you so much for your understanding. With that, we'll close the public comments on those items. Of the ones that were not called special by council members, we can take votes on those. I believe that's items number 1, 21, 25, and 30. If you can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. If we can send 14 to 16 forthwith, please, without objection. And we are still awaiting, I believe, the committee report on item number two. Is that correct? Okay. So we'll go to item number four. In the meantime, called special by Ms. Han. Item number four, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a great example of how our port of Los Angeles can use its sphere of influence and its leverage to send a message that we believe in growing the port of Los Angeles, we believe in making it competitive with other ports around the world, but we want to be green. And what we're doing today is approving a new zero emission tariff. And this tariff would provide a 15% reduction in warfage rates for all zero emission vehicles that are imported and exported through the port of Los Angeles. This plan would actually make the port of Los Angeles the world's first port to offer such an incentive for any automaker that is producing zero emissions vehicles. And I think, again, this is a perfect example of how we have, in the city of Los Angeles, really had a mandate of a clean air action plan. We want cleaner ships, we want cleaner trucks, we want the equipment that moves that cargo around on the docks to be clean. But this really focuses on green technology, green jobs, a green economy, and it really positions us as a leader in giving an incentive to carmakers around the world and here domestically, that if you produce a zero emissions vehicle and you bring it through the port of Los Angeles, we're going to give you a 15% reduction on your warfage fee. The first company to take advantage of this will be BYD, which is a Chinese manufacturer. But I also know that Chevron and Nissan have zero emission vehicles that are coming to the market right now, and we know that they're also going to take advantage of this rate. This will encourage these manufacturers to bring these vehicles to LA and bring the jobs that are associated with it. So this is a great day for Los Angeles. I want to thank the leadership, Port of Los Angeles, under Dr. Nats, and all those who work to be creative about remaining competitive, trying to attract more cargo in the port, but sending a very clear message that if you're also working to clean our air, if you're also working to enhance green technology as it was, as it relates to vehicles, then come to our port and you're going to benefit as a result of that. So I would love to have your eye vote on this new tariff at the port of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Thank you for your good work on that. Please prepare the roll on item number four and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. If we can, thank you. We can send 30 forthwith without objection as well. Next, we have number 22 called special by Mr. Dennis P. Zine.
Number 22?
Correct, number 22.
Thank you. On this particular matter, warfage, Mr. President, Mr. Smith and I both reserve members of the LAPD, and what we're looking at, and the city attorney can, do we have a representative of the city attorney's office here, other than Dion?
You're stuck with me. The attorney who drafted this ordinance is advising police commission right now during the meeting.
Okay, well, we'd like to request a report back on this particular matter. We don't have any problem with the focus as it is now. This is for active personnel who retire. Doesn't give a term of years of service. If they have 10 years and they retire, honorably retire on some kind of a service pension, disability pension, they'd be eligible to have that honorably retired badge. What we're looking at is retired members of the Reserve Corps. If they do 20 years of service with the Los Angeles Police Department as a reserve officer and then retire after 20 years, and we'd put a minimum of 20 years of service for the reserve officers, then they would also be eligible to have the honorably retired badge as a reserve officer, because reading the language, it doesn't include reserve officers. So we think that that would be appropriate, giving that condition for 20 years of service as a reserve. It just mentions police officers in the ordinance, and it would have the same badge that would have honorably retired, but to be included as a reserve officer, you have to do 20 years of service and then be eligible for that, obviously at their cost as it is for the active personnel who retire. And Mr. Smith, and I think that would be a movement forward, but we'd have to get a report back on that particular position.
So the, today's ordinance will be voted on separately, and you're amending the whole matter to question our office?
Not amending, but we, we support what's currently on the table, but we'd like to have a report back on that particular ordinance to see if we could extend it to reserve officers with 20 years, minimum 20 years of service as a reserve officer. So if someone devotes 20 years of their life as a reserve officer, retires from the Reserve Corps, we think they should be eligible to have that honorably retired badge.
In our office, we'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all we ask, and we support this particular. And I want to also mention Chief Gates. God bless Daryl Gates, who was instrumental in moving this forward for many, many years. Mr. Smith and I have worked with Chief Gates for many, many years, and this was one of his missions in the retirement, that this would be a position that officers could receive. So in his name, we wanted to make sure that that was mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Representatives for the police department here at all? So, Sergeant, Detective Sergeant Edo, do you want to speak to this? I just, I appreciate you, Mr. Zine. Appreciate what you do, but I want to make sure the police department tells us this.
With our representative, Mr. Labange.
I know.
I'm sorry, you look familiar. Could you just identify yourself for the record?
Harriet O for the police department. We don't have any objection to reporting back with the city attorney on, on Mr. Zine's...
Right. And all the protections that you want to make sure happens, because there's been periods of times where things have been possibly used in an improper way. We want to make sure that you protect it in that, and that the great tradition of the Los Angeles Police Department is supported in this. Absolutely. And I do want to thank Mr. Zine and Mr. Smith for their service as those who help as reserve officers. Detective Sergeant Edo, I want to thank you for testimony on that. Thank you. First time you ever testified.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next is number 28 called special by Mr. Alarcon. Number 28.
Council members, this is a public convenience and necessity issue, and having visited this particular site and met with the owner, I can tell you that this is, this is a, an application that is supported by the community, and not only, certainly not simply because of the alcohol, but if, if they're not able to sell beer, they may not be able to stay open. They are a WIC site, which means that people who use food stamps can go there with convenience. So with that, I move that the city council conditionally approve the PCN, Public Convenience and Necessity, application for the sale of beer and wine at 12737 Glen Oaks, based on the conditions set forth by LAPD vice as submitted in council file number 10, 1960, public record. The LAPD vice has submitted 13 conditions. The owners are fine with those conditions. They are very strong, and I believe this site will not be a problem. I ask for your support.
All right, Mr. Alarcon moves approval of that. If we can please prepare the roll with the amendments to it, and the conditions rather, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. And are we still awaiting the report on number two? All we have is item number two. Why don't we have the commission nominee come forward? We're still awaiting the report, but if you'd like to come forward to the table. And Mr. Labange.
We had this, it's a great testimony, have a great addition to this commission by Mayor Bill Regosa. This commissioner and her life history, what she brings, her professional life, will add to the dimension that this commission should have. So Commissioner, please speak.
Good morning. Thank all the council members and President Garcetti. My name is Jan Wetstone. I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. I am a journeyman electrician with IBW Local 11, so I think that was one of the major reasons I was chosen to... I was chosen to be on the commission, tasked with women in non-traditional careers, because I am a woman from a non-traditional career. I have to start a little bit about my history. Come from very humble beginnings. My father is a hard worker, union meat cutter, and raised with great family, a very mixed family. Unfortunately, when I was five years old, my mother was diagnosed with a mental illness, and that mental illness destroyed our family. So I'm a survivor, if nothing else, I'm a survivor of domestic violence, mental illness, I think what I'm going to bring to the committee and the commission will be that survivor fighter in me. I was also a single teenage mother, so I've overcome just about every obstacle that you can imagine. And I love the City of Los Angeles. I was born and raised here. I'm a product of Los Angeles public schools, both in Los Angeles and San Fernando Valley. I've been on either policy committees or planning committees for the Women Building Trades Conference for nine of the 10 years of its existence. Very committed to the cause. I'm a community activist, labor activist, and my hope and vision for the commission is that we can impart in women, girls, and youth and minorities in the city that they can become self-sufficient and to empower the women and girls so that they know they don't have to be afraid to tread on untreaded or lightly treaded waters, choosing non-traditional careers. And I've been where a lot of them probably are. Also, I would like to thank all of my mentors that have helped me get to this point, appreciate all of their guidance and encouragement. Larry Frank, Donnie Brooks, Charles Hammond, Jim Smith, Jesse Hood, Eric Jackson, my family, my mother, I hope either she's on her way or she's watching somewhere, my father who couldn't be here as well, my brothers. And thank you all for allowing me to fill this seat. Thank you.
Mr. President, members, this is a person who's lived a life and is in the trade now as electrician, saw opportunity in the trades and broke that barrier that often was there for non-traditional roles and jobs. And she spoke so eloquently that I ask that we strongly support Jan Wetland for this position, Commission on the Status of Women. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Wetstone, for sharing that story. Ms. Hahn is next on our queue.
Oh, thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate your willingness to serve on this commission, and, you know, I'm sure there are those who would think, you know, do we really need a commission on the status of women, and don't women now have all the rights and privileges that we need, is there really a need for this? But I think more than ever now, with the budget cuts that are being proposed at the state level and at the federal level, could be devastating to women and could really put women back in a position that they are not empowered to, you know, take control of their lives. I'm very upset that Congress is considering cutting all funding to Planned Parenthood. I think even cuts to workforce investment and education are really going to hit women hard. And I'm, what I would hope, and I would ask of you, is that the Commission on the Status of Women quickly begin to take up the proposed budget cuts at the state level and the federal level, and quickly analyze how those would impact women in the City of Los Angeles, and, you know, get that to the full City Council as quickly as possible so we can begin, you know, having your support and the strength behind the commission as we begin to hopefully battle those proposed cuts, because I do think they would be devastating to women, not just in Los Angeles, but really everywhere. So I would ask that your commission ask the staff to take those up immediately and analyze and make a recommendation on how we should proceed in light of those proposed cuts.
Thank you so much for that. We definitely will be looking into that. I know I've personally, there are some things near and dear to my heart that are on those cuts, Youth Build Program, or I would have never gotten into construction had it not been for Youth Build, Career Tech Education for adults. So those are some major things that need to happen, and we just had a meeting last week, and we were discussing that, so we will definitely bring some recommendations forth.
Good, and I ask you to do that as quickly as possible. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your courage and for putting yourself forward, and thank you for offering yourself to the people of Los Angeles. We, on item two, if there's no public speaker cards on two, will now take the vote. So let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes. I'm sorry, thirteen ayes.
Thirteen, even one more. Congratulations, unanimous vote, and welcome aboard. A round of applause for our new commissioner, please. That was the last item on the agenda for today. If we can please go to the next piece of business.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There's an excuse in our desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused May 3rd and 4th for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, she is excused?
Desk is clear.
Okay. Any announcements, colleagues? Do we have any announcements? Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to thank all the people of the community of Van Nuys for talking about and celebrating the 100th anniversary of the community of Van Nuys. And I'd just like to also thank the Daily News for writing a very lengthy, excellent article about the history of Van Nuys and what took place 100 years ago today, and also being honest and accurate about how there was a big barbecue of steak and beans, and, or it was mentioned in the article frijoles, is another word for beans in Spanish, and that it really was a real estate sale that day. It was about a real estate marketing barbecue, much like somebody might walk into an open house today. But the fact of the matter is, it is a beautiful place, and I think accurately so. Van Nuys has been described over and over by many people over the last 100 years as the heart of the San Fernando Valley, and it certainly is. So hopefully, we'll see some celebrations throughout this year. Unfortunately, 100 years later, it's a very, very difficult financial time, and so it's not that easy to put together celebrations with very little resources. But we have had some celebrations so far. At a recent Van Nuys Neighborhood Council meeting, my staff provided a cake, and they had some wonderful words and some fun that night at the Neighborhood Council meeting, and I'm sure there'll be many more celebrations to come. And once again, congratulations to the community of Van Nuys. Congratulations to all the people who coined Van Nuys 100 years ago and every generation since who've been able to enjoy the heart of the San Fernando Valley. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Rosendahl, but for just one quick second, if you'll indulge me, we're going to have, I want to announce as soon as possible, we're going to have the Friday council meeting begin at noon. I know Mr. Smith is going to adjourn in honor of the firefighter who lost his life and whose funeral will be this Friday at the cathedral at 9:30. But for folks from the public and members of our staff, and for council members, it'll be a noon meeting on Friday to allow council members to go to that funeral. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, just to shout out to the people of Libya as they're going through a change. Gaddafi's been there 40 years, a real bad guy, and let's hope that there is very little violence, if none, there's been a lot already, and let's hope that the people themselves are able to create a democracy there like they're working on right now in Egypt. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zine.
I just want to acknowledge, Mr. Cardenas, and Van Nuys, 100 years. In the San Fernando Valley, there's a number of communities that are celebrating 100 years. Canoga Park is coming up on 100th anniversary. They're going to have celebrations, and there may be some other communities throughout Los Angeles that are coming up to that 100th anniversary. So we want to acknowledge all of them, but I know that Van Nuys, the hub of the valley for so many years where I worked, a vibrant community, and congratulations for the representation there. Following shortly will be Canoga Park, and I think a number of other, maybe Janus down in San Pedro, they've got some of those older communities celebrating 100 years, thriving communities in the City of the Angels.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Mr. Cardenas?
On that note, thank you very much, Mr. Zine. We're very fortunate and blessed to be able to represent the San Fernando Valley, a handful of us, and to have Van Nuys in my district is something I'm very proud of. But one of the things that will probably, again, maybe in 1914, the economics will be a little bit better, and we'll be able to celebrate a little bit more grandiose. In 1914, the Van Nuys High School was founded, so maybe then we could actually spend a little bit more time talking about how Marilyn Monroe went to San Fernando, to Van Nuys High School, Robert Redford, and Jane Russell, et cetera. So there are many, many people who have...
Now, that's the third school...
Your kids? There you go.
That's the third school I know of in LA that Marilyn Monroe went to now. That's incredible.
Maybe she transferred a lot, I guess.
Where else did she go to?
Well, Tom would know which high schools Marilyn Monroe went to.
Tony, I just want to congratulate you on leadership in Van Nuys. When I went to Marshall, we would always drive out there. I drove a '29 Ford roadster once down Van Nuys, cruised there, always the speed limit. Always the speed.
Never got pulled over.
Never got pulled over, so.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, we're actually going to adjourn tomorrow in honor of the firefighter, pending some more information from the fire department, so thank you for your patience in awaiting that, in that deepest tragedy, and we, of course, have all been thinking about the firefighter, the department, and his family, but Mr. Smith will get fuller information and present that tomorrow. Do we have any other adjournment motions for today? Mr. Smith, did you want to say something on that?
Before you begin, do we have planned, the funeral is set for Friday?
Yes, I announced that we're going to have council at noon, so that everybody can go to the 9:30 cathedral, 9:30 cathedral funeral. Do you have any adjournment motions today, council members? Okay, if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjournment motions. Thank you to members of the audience as well for joining us, and...
As we did rise before we start here, I slipped with us today as a group of students from USC, and they witnessed our meeting today. We welcome you, and also ask afterwards you go to the tower and observe the Tom Bradley Tower on your visit here to City Hall. Thank you, Trojans, for being here. Thank you, Mr. President. We'll all rise.
Fight on.
Thank you. I can ask everybody in chambers to rise. I think we have one individual that might have...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on one second, Ms. Hahn, I just want to make sure everybody is... Thank you. I can ask everybody, please rise for adjournment motions. Thank you. And I think Ms. Alarcon and then Ms. Hahn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Alarcon, please.
Members, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Tiffany Alcala. She was 29 years old. She's the stepdaughter of my best friend, Paul Diaz. She passed away on Tuesday, February 8th, from complications due to influenza. She was fine one week, and the next week she passed away. It's a reminder of how delicate our lives are. She was born on June 30th, 1981. She graduated from Notre Dame High School in Sherman Oaks. She attended Newbury School of Beauty in Granada Hills and received a certificate as a skin specialist. She worked at Total Woman Gym and Spa in Torrance, and she loved helping her family and friends. And as she was described at her funeral, she, one woman referred to her as a lampada. She was the light of the room when she walked in, a truly beautiful young lady. Very sad that she passed. She's left by her mother, Linda Alcala, and father, David Alcala, sisters Desiree and Katrina, and brother David, and of course, my friend, stepfather, Paul Diaz. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn in the honor of Esther Davila, a lifelong resident of the community of Wilmington, who passed away Friday, February 18th. She worked for many years at Pan Pacific Fisheries on Terminal Island and was a proud member of the sincere Senior Citizens Club at Banning Park in Wilmington. She loved to travel, especially to the local casinos, and she also loved to cook for family gatherings. She was a very giving and generous person who lived life to the fullest. Esther survived by her loving husband of 51 years, Ramiro Davila, and her four children, Esther, Elizabeth, Ramiro, and Albert. She's also survived by her two sisters, Frances Ghul and Sarah Ramirez, and 13 grandchildren and 10 great-grandchildren. There will be a public viewing today at Green Hills Memorial, from 5:00 to 9:00, with the memorial rosary at 7:00 PM. And the funeral services and burial will be held tomorrow at 11:00 AM at Green Hills Memorial Chapel.
Thank you. Other adjournment motions? If there are no other adjournment motions, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? We'll next be in session tomorrow, that's Wednesday.